...your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good morning, I guess.
Yep.
All right.
Chris, can you call roll, please?
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Tissart.
Here.
Ms. Detzal.
Yep.
Mr. Yoshimura.
Here.
Mr. Detzal.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Lindsay Creasy as she has a special recognition for us tonight.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. January is a very special month, not only because it's my birthday, shameless plug, but also because it's Board of Education Month. And it is our opportunity to not only acknowledge our board members and the hard work that you're doing, but it's also an opportunity for us to show appreciation to you for all that you do in order with leadership and service for all of our public schools. We really, really, really appreciate that. So, let's give them a round of applause. As many of you all know, we rolled out our strategic plan. And within our strategic plan, we have a relentless focus on literacy. Because of that, we will be telling you a little bit about what we're going to be doing with these special books. As part of our BOE celebration, we're actually going to be putting 11 books in each school. So, each school will have a book that will be placed inside of the library. So, we're very, very, very happy for that. In the past, we were putting them in the elementary schools. This year, we'll be putting them in every school. So, very excited about it. I'm going to tell you all a little bit about the books. In every elementary school, we're actually putting what is called "The Good Egg." And it's from the creators of "The Bad Seed." It's by Jory John and Pete Oswald. This will go in every elementary school, as well as all of our, oh, what's the, every elementary school, as well as Houston Early Learning Center. The book that was chosen for the middle school is "Other Words From Home" by Jasmine Warga. If you'll turn your attention to the table here, the book that was chosen for Corrine High School was "Quiet" by Susan Cain. And lastly, the book that was chosen for Northwest High School is the literature book, "Big Ideas Simply Explained." And afterwards, we'll give you all an opportunity to look at all the books and to see your name inside. We've placed a plaque inside that, or a certificate inside that says that it was donated in honor of the board. So, we're very excited about that. We'll also give you an opportunity to sign inside. As part of our BOE celebration, we had students create bookmarks. We reached out to all the schools. We asked each school to provide two students to make bookmarks, but we had overwhelming response. We received over 70 bookmarks that were donated, that were created over break, designed on both sides. We've laminated them and put a tassel on them. And so, each one of our board members will receive a bookmark from one of our students, as well as you all will receive one as well. But we have 70 of them to choose from, so you'll get to choose the bookmark of your choice. But we're very excited about the students that took the time to create and to design the bookmarks. At this time, we want to take time to give each one of our board members a certificate of appreciation. When I call your name, after I read your bios, please come down to meet Todd and Amy and to receive your certificate, as well as your gift, as well as photo. So, we'll have Todd and Amy come down. All right, and we'll have you all standing in the center.
Don't be shy, Todd.
All right, first, we have Pam Detzal. Pam Detzal has been a member of the Northwest Local School Board since 1998. She's been married to her husband, Jim Detzal, for 33 years, and they have three daughters, Ashley, Brittany, and Lindsay. Pam is a co-owner of Detzal Insurance Company. She enjoys spending time with her family, the theater, music, traveling, fantasy football, and being actively involved in the Northwest Local School District. When asked about her pride for the district, Pam said, "I wish all of our community members would take time to visit our schools. Our dedicated staff work hard each and every day to provide a quality education for all students. We have students that excel both in and outside of the classroom." Please join me in giving Pam a round of applause.
You can photobomb it if you want, Jerry. Jim just photobombed you guys.
We're going to mend the minutes on that one because Jim said his 37 years.
Boom, 37 years. All right.
Jim wants credit for every year.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The only one that would know it.
Joe Yoshimura. Joe Yoshimura is originally from Chicago, Illinois. After graduating from St. Ignatius College Prep High School, he attended Xavier University, where he received a BA in Political Science and an MA in History. He's married to Martha. They have three wonderful children, Eric, Amy, and Sarah, as well as six grandchildren, and then that seven over the Christmas break. He taught in Cincinnati Public School District for 35-plus years, and he also taught at Walnut Hills High School for 27 years. In 1998, he was given the Golden Apple Award for Excellence in Teaching, and in 2009, he was awarded the Most Prestigious, the University of Cincinnati U.S. Educator of the Year. Joe is a member of the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers and served on the Union Executive Council. He has served on the Diversity Council for OHSAA in Columbus, Ohio. Joe was also the umpire in men's softball and was an official for varsity basketball for 27 years. He became the first Asian to officiate a state final in the state of Ohio. Last year, in 2019, Joe was awarded the OHSBCA Hall of Honor Award. This honor and award is given to individuals who've provided exemplary service in, to Ohio high school basketball. Please join me in honoring Joe Yoshimura. Oh, turn your certificate around. Next, we have Jim Detzal. Jim Detzal was re-elected in November of 2015. Scratch that, November of 2019, for his third term on the school board, which now will be the fourth. He continues to serve as the Butler Tech Board Representative for the Northwest Local School District. He served on the Board Development of Effectiveness Committee at Butler Tech. He thoroughly enjoys his work on both boards, and one of his goals is to increase the number of students in our district to enroll in Butler Tech programs. Jim has been the owner of Detzal Insurance Agency since 1979. He is married to his wife, Pam, and they have three daughters, Ashley, Brittany, and Lindsay. Jim is a graduate of Northwest High School. He is also a volunteer coach at Corrine High School, coaching track and cross country. And in his spare time, he enjoys spending time getting to know all the district kids. Jim enjoys watching all sports and is a huge Florida Gator fan. He's also the Treasurer of Community Partners for Education. Please join me in honoring Jim Detzal. Up next, we have Mark Gilbert. Mark was elected to the Board of Education in November of 2017. He is a lifelong Corrine Township community member. Mark has been employed in the medical field for 30 years. Where he worked before is the Director of Operations for Bright U Treatment Center. He is now the Regional Manager for Steel Valley Radiography. He is a graduate of Mount Hillie High School and earned his degree at the University of Cincinnati. Mark has been married to his wife, Tia, for 27 years. They have two children, Brandon and Hannah. Mark and his family attend White Oak Christian Church, where they participate in many functions within the church, as well as participate in mission trips around the world. Mark's focus for being on the board is to continue the development of the school district initiatives and advocate for the many dedicated employees who are taking care of our children. Mark is passionate about connecting the district to the supporting townships to strengthen the community as a whole. Please join me in welcoming and honoring Mark Gilbert. And last but not least is Matt Tissart. Matt Tissart is our newest board member. Matt is a lifelong resident of Corrine Township and attended Northwest Schools. Matt Tissart has been married to his wife, Angie, for 27 years. They have four sons together, Alex, who graduated from Corrine High School in 2012, Noah, who graduated from Corrine High School in 2015, and Sam, who graduated from Corrine High School in 2018, as well as Daniel, who graduated from Corrine High School in 2000, who will graduate from Corrine High School in 2023. Matt has been a Boy Scout leader for 19 years, and most recently, a Scout Master of Troop 828. Matt is also a trustee of the Corrine Historical Society. He enjoys football, Reds baseball, traveling with his family, attending musical concerts, and monster trucks with his sons. Please join me in welcoming and honoring Matt Tissart. Joe Yoshimura, Matt Tissart, Pam Detzal, Mark Gilbert, and Jim Detzal, please stand one more time. On behalf of our school district, I say thank you.
Lindsay, I just want to quickly thank you for making this very special. And I know I kind of get choked up every year, but as our grandsons get older, and he's, our oldest one's four now, and the other one's going to be two on Wednesday, and their love of books, I just can't wait for the day that he comes running home from Montford Heights and maybe has one of our names in it. That'll be really special. Thank you.
I remember my first year, we got cards from the kids. The envelope was stuffed full of cards. And I hadn't seen a card like that since my kids were really small. And I'm up here, I'm trying to wipe my tears. I'm like, oh, gosh. So, it's awesome. I love seeing that stuff. It's definitely one of the highlights of the year. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay.
The next item on the agenda is Legislative Update.
I used to be, but...
Probably not much today.
No.
Okay. The next item is Butler Technology Update by the Board Representative.
Yeah, we'll, we're having our organizational meeting next Tuesday. So, I have a report next meeting.
Okay. The next item is, are there any reports from the employee organizations, certificated or licensed employees? No. How about classified employees? Are there any reports from school-related organizations? I did not receive any community comment requests, so we'll move to the next item.
All right, the first item is Certificated Licensed Personnel, Certified Retirements and Resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions or comments?
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero.
Next item is Classified Personnel, Classified Retirements and Resignations. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero.
Next is the minutes from December 9th. I recommend that the Board of Education dispense with reading of and approve the regular meeting minutes for December 9th. So moved.
Second.
I'll abstain on this vote.
The vote passes four. Four and one abstain.
Next, I'd like to draw your attention for the financial report for the month of November. Our all-funds balance was almost $47 million. Our general fund unreserved balance was $20 million. Our revenues have come in at about 43% for the year at $40 million, and our expenditures are at $38 million to about 40% through the year. Our investments have an average weighted return of 1.99%. It is starting to decrease. And the list of monthly bills are our routine bills, as well as we had our principal and interest payments for our debt, our master facility project payments. We had some textbooks for our auxiliary schools. We had the Montford Heights HVAC controls, some kitchen equipment, the Corrine High School slope project, Microsoft licenses, some financial and student software that we have to pay on a quarterly basis. And then, our auxiliary schools also has student licenses, as well as our annual WACROSS. So, with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the financial report for the month of November.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments?
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero.
Finally, I'd like to ask the Board to accept the amended certificate as approved by the Hamerlin County Budget Commission for $191.6 million. And this is them sending back the approval of our estimated resources based on the appropriation resolutions that we approved on a quarterly basis and submitted after the last meeting. So, with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve, to accept the amended certificate of estimated resources as approved by the Hamerlin County Budget Commission. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Next item is a general business item, vendor contracts. Superintendent and Treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the vendor contracts as listed. Each board member, as you open the vendor contracts, you will see what it is paid for and if it was budgeted for, as we have done in the past. Matt, I'm mostly bringing that up for you. If it's not something it was budgeted for, it'll be listed in a different color.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero.
Next item is a certificated licensed personnel item. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero.
Next item is Classified Personnel Items. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments?
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero.
The next item is a miscellaneous item. It is a resolution opposing the state of Ohio Ed Choice Scholarship voucher program. In the resolution, it is a resolution opposing the state program and how it's being funded. It is attached to the board agenda for anyone who would like to see it, but it basically says that vouchers should not come from public school funding. We have made a lot of movement on this, but there has still been no official decision on what changes will be made. I have received notification via email or personal letters back from every legislator that I have sent to. They all tell us that change is coming. We have another meeting for Ed Choice in Columbus next Thursday, but we continue to try to push the envelope, make sure that our legislators are aware that this is taking funding away from public education that was never planned for. If they're going to award these scholarships to kids who attend parochial schools who have never set foot into a public school building, that is not the way this should be funded. I please and beg and plead with our, our community members and our staff members to email your state representatives. We've put stuff out via email. We've put stuff out on social media. They are working, even though they don't come back till the end of January. They are meeting. They hope to have a decision prior to February 1. The key there being, if it goes past February 1, it's already put into law and a change would occur after that, so they would have to pay it for the year. The other thing they could is change the date from February 1st to March 1st, but it sounds like there's enough movement where they'll get it done before February 1st. So, you can write letters, you can call. We have scripts of what we're talking about. If you want to know how it affects the Northwest Local School District, it would be in the sum of $16 million over the next four years that would be taken directly for our funding and given to kids who have yet to step foot in our buildings. And that's K through 12. So, it is very important that we reach out. Legislators tend to listen to community members who are taxpayers and parents, but they are also meeting with us. They understand. They strongly have urged that there needs to be a fix. So, I just continue to promote that this be something we push. But what we will do with this resolution is, is once it's signed and moved on by all of you, we will then forward it to every legislator in the state of Ohio, governor, and we will continue to forward it. We are one of the early school districts to do it. Fairfield was one of the earliest to it, and so, we had to wait to our board meeting to do it. So, I strongly suggest that this resolution be something that the board approves and that it shows a commitment from all Board of Educations. If you go back to our organizational hearing and when we've become a, a member of the Ohio School Boards Association, this is exactly the type of things we're talking about. I believe Matt became the legislative liaison, so I can work with you to give you more information on this, and then I'll give all the board members, because you need to talk to other board members. You need to talk to anybody you can. And please don't hesitate to call any of the legislators. The ones I have called have been very receptive, talked to Bill Blessing in person and some others, and they understand there's an issue, so.
February 4th and 5th, I'll be up in Columbus, meeting with, there's eight of them, eight representatives that we've got appointments with, to meet with them and talk to them about this. And Bill's one of them.
Okay.
So, there's like five or six of us from Butler Tech. We're all going up to talk about Ed Choice.
Is there a growing number of school districts that are jumping on board with this thing?
You know, what's, what's funny about that is, so, I'll compare the first meeting we had in Columbus with, I'm there representing BASSA. There's board members from Ohio Association of School Board Members. There's the Federal Teacher Association who's up there. There were people at that table at the original meeting who didn't even know about this and was not aware of it. But remember, this affects people differently. If you're in a rural area where you don't have a whole lot of parochial schools, this isn't something high on your radar. But if you're in a school in southwest Ohio where there's a lot of parochial schools and good choices for schools, this is high on our radar. So, now, everybody is aware. It has gotten out there, but this is just a start. We have some other things that we need to talk about, school funding and things and bills that they're passing, and they're really not paying attention to what they're passing. When the person responsible for student achievement says that she wasn't aware of what she was voting on, Ms. Laner, that, that becomes a problem. So, we need to make sure that they, and I think they now are aware. They really need to pay attention to what's being voted on. But to get back to your original question, Joe, yes, it is widespread all over the state now. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution as listed.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero.
The next item is Curriculum and Instruction. It is the program of studies for the high school. It is for information only. Attached, you'll find the high school program of study for 2020, 2021 school year. This item is being presented today, so if you have any questions, you have from now until our approval meeting to check with myself or feel free to contact Brenda Miller to find out exactly any questions that you might have or find out any questions that you need answered. The next item is Curriculum and Instruction. It is for information also. It is our Credit Flexibility Handbook for the 2020, 2021 school year. Again, look it over. It is on the website for our, under our Board of Education meetings, so the public can look it over also. And if they contact you with questions or concerns, please get ahold of myself or Brenda. We'll be glad to answer. And the last item for Curriculum and Instruction is Information Only for New High School Courses for 2020, 2021. Again, three abstracts, one for Applied Algebra, one for Mathematics, Modeling, and Reasoning, and a course abstract for ASL. So, again, information only. We will seek approval at the next meeting. If you have any questions, please get in contact with myself or Brenda Miller. The next item is for Information Only, is it our 2020, 2021 District Calendar. It lists starting dates, holiday breaks, and end dates for our school calendar. We want to get this approved at our next meeting, if at all possible, so parents have it in advance and can start making plans. If you see, have any concerns expressed to you by community members or parents, please let us know. We'll try to address them. I want you to know that we did survey staff and got their input. They actually made the final decision on what the calendar looks like based on what they wanted the days of start to be versus ending and what they wanted PD days and other things to look like. So, they did get votes on that. Dustin has the results. He shared them with the staff. So, it was a collaborative effort developing it.
Thank you.
So, I have a question about that. How has that been working logistically in the schools? Because this is now the third year where the second quarter ends now after the break. So, they've been doing exams before?
Yeah, so we did move exams before. Brenda, do we have any statistical data on moving the exams before break instead of taking 12 to 16 days off and then taking exams when we return?
There really isn't any data to support one option over the other. In terms of midterms, we have been watching it to see the teachers and administrators prefer to give them prior to the break and then use those few days after the break for universal screening. So, they're giving some map assessments, or NWA map assessments, to kind of see where the health of our system is more generally than those midterm exams, as well as to do makeup exams for students who are absent. That's how we're using it currently.
All right, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. All right, for Superintendent's update, we, I'm trying to see where you would like to have the work session in the past. So looking if you have options of what you want to do with our two work sessions, one in January and one in February. I don't know if you have the availability to leave work to be there at 5:00. Just trying to make it so you're not out. Another.
You want us to decide now? It would be helpful.
Just get your feedback, yeah.
I mean, I would, whatever works best for the rest of the board. I mean, earlier, I think's nicer if we can eat during it, but it would be, I can get there whatever time.
Team-building exercises, work together, get in front of you with some key information, so just trying to see if it better fits your needs.
I believe we were at Hamilton County Educational Center last year or the year prior.
Correct, and they're under construction right now, so that's a little bit of hold up whether we would be back there or not.
Okay.
I'm flexible as far as the time.
I can be as well.
I'm very flexible.
Okay, so let's plan on 5 o'clock start on the 20th then. And then, once I get a final determination from Hamilton County Educational Service Center, we'll go from there. Now, Amy and Chris, is that in?
January, Todd?
January and February will both be a 5 o'clock start.
Okay.
And I'll send that information out tomorrow. So we have now changed the calendar, so do we need a motion to change the times and adjust the calendar, Amy? So if somebody could make a motion to make the...
We have a motion to approve the time change.
So moved.
Second.
So we're going at 5 o'clock on the 22nd, correct?
Correct.
There's a motion in a second. Any other questions?
That's the 22nd or 23rd?
January 23rd. Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. So that's a Thursday. Wait a minute. I have the 22nd.
Yeah, I had the 22nd also.
I have the, a Wednesday, two weeks from tonight.
I'm pulling up the calendar. You already got it up at 22nd. It's 22nd.
And then the Thursday, it's a Thursday. I mean, in February, it's a Thursday, the 20th, correct? Or that's a board meeting, correct? And that's a work session on the 20th?
Correct.
Okay, so that could change to 5:00.
Yeah, so your official dates are January 22nd, a Wednesday, at 5:00, and Thursday, February 20th, at 5:00. And those are the changes we will make to the board meeting schedule, and they are work sessions.
So we need a vote?
So this is to yes or no on a 5:00 PM for the January 22nd and February 20th. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes. The vote passes five to zero.
And that's all I have for mine.
At this point, it's an opportunity for the community to speak about anything that we discussed tonight in the 7 o'clock meeting that we're finishing up here. Anybody have any questions, comments? Now we'll go into board member comments. Joe?
One thing, I have my seventh grandchild. Harper Jean was born on December 20th at 7:20 in the morning. Mom, Dad, and the other, the big sis, Mila, are doing fine.
Congratulations. Jim?
Nothing.
Nothing? Matt?
I'm just, I want to say I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve on the Board of Education. Thank you.
Just real quick, I want to thank those that are out in the audience attending, and
I'm looking forward to working with you, Matt.
And I want to thank my fellow board members for electing me. I appreciate that, and I will do my very best to support you guys as well as the school district. I want to thank the students for the arts and crafts they did. That's awesome. Looking forward to picking one. And I'm looking forward to 2020 being a great year for our school district. Hopefully everything's safe and move forward.
The next item is executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, or compensation of a public employee official or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employer official. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion now. In a second, any questions?
My vote is yes.
And that vote passes five to zero.
Please join me with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always say that.
Thank you all for coming. We are going to swear in our two new and reappointed board members.
Go ahead, Matt. You can go.
Hi, Matt Kiesort. Do you hear my swear? That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. That I will perform faithfully. The duties of a member of the Board of Education. Of the Northwest Local School District. And of Hamilton County. Best of my ability. And in accordance. With the laws now in effect. And hereafter to be enacted. During my continuance in said office. And until my successor is elected and called.
I do have the support. I have the support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Ohio. And I will perform faithfully. The duties of a member of the Board of Education. And of the Northwest Local School District. And of Hamilton County. The best of my ability. And in accordance. With the laws now in effect. And hereafter to be enacted. And hereafter to be enacted. During my continuance in said office. And until my successor is elected and called. And until my successor is elected and called.
I do have the support. I have the support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Ohio. And I will perform faithfully. And I will perform faithfully. The duties of a member of the Board of Education. And of the Northwest Local School District. And of Hamilton County. The best of my ability. And in accordance. With the laws now in effect. And hereafter to be enacted. And hereafter to be enacted. During my continuance in said office. And until my successor is elected and called. And until my successor is elected and called. Congratulations again.
Chris, can we hit you the roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Yoshimura?
Here.
Mr. Kiesort?
Here.
Mr. Detzal?
Here.
So this is our organizational meeting, so the, after the swearing-in of our new members, we nominate our officers for the Board of Education. So the first item to, for nomination is the president of the Northwest Board of Education.
Mark, I'd like to nominate Mark Gilbert.
Second.
Comments, questions?
I can't get it.
Chris has to add the names. And then check to see if there's anymore.
Thanks. I will take my hand off the mouse. Click add.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
Anyone?
Can we take a handful or a purple? Soon as she gets it in. Okay. Little Jesus, love.
Since there are no more nominations, we can now move to the election of the president, and it should say, Mark Gilbert.
Hit the sync button in the top left.
I'm syncing, but it's not, let me vote. It does say your name. Yeah. Pictures come up?
No.
Okay.
Matt's not in.
I click yes.
Hold on.
Matt's name's not on that.
Oh, yeah, no, he's in.
Were you able to join the meeting?
Yeah, I clicked yes. Should I say it again?
Oh, I see, his name's not coming up on that thing.
Right, but it's only come up after the, if you scroll down, I'm sorry. Let's scroll back up. Hit sync. Can he log out and log back in, Chris?
I'm looking at how many have gone up.
We're just keeping you here longer.
It gave me the options, I clicked yes.
Can I join the meeting again and see what it does? Because at the bottom of ours, it shows that you voted yes.
Right, let's see that down there. Under vote results.
Yep.
Max with the A. I'm still not sure, and I just want to make sure it's already recorded and doesn't do it count. If you want it to say, you know, write down.
Yes. Shows it down at the bottom.
Yeah, the motion passes five to zero. So we are on 4.4 now?
Yes.
I am Mark Gilbert.
Do you hear my affirm?
Do you hear my affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will perform faithfully.
That I will perform faithfully.
The duties of a president of the Board of Education.
The duties of a president of the Board of Education.
Of the Northwest Local School District.
Of the Hamilton County.
Of the Hamilton County.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance.
With the laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor.
And until my successor is elected and called.
And until my successor is elected and called.
Next item is we will elect a vice president. Are there any nominations for the vice president position?
I would like to nominate Joe Yoshimura for vice president.
I would like to nominate Jim Detzal for vice president.
Do we need a second on the motion?
Matt dominates Joe. Who wants a second for that to be voted?
I can't second myself. Can I?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second.
We'll do it five, the way of the nomination, so the first vote will be for Joe. And if you get the majority, then we'll move along to the oath. If not the majority, we'll second it, vote for Joe. And if that's the majority, we'll move on to the oath. And if that's not the majority, we'll keep going.
Go to 4.6.
No, 4.5.
I'm on 4.5.
Okay, I'm not, so just sync it.
Go ahead and move to the next one.
4.6.
No, 4.5.
I'm on 4.5.
There you go. Now this time, you should see that it is you're voting for Joe as vice president at this time.
I don't have an option yet.
You guys hit this thing?
I'm showing how to discuss.
Okay, so this is for Joe?
Yeah.
Matt's showing at the bottom again. You don't have to verbally say what it is.
My vote was yes.
So the vote ended, three votes no, two votes yes.
So we can move on because he got the majority.
So I have now updated, since that is not the majority, I've now updated as Jim, so you should be able to refresh. And do you move to the next item?
Good.
And so now we should move on to Joe.
Let's see.
It takes a little bit. Come on. Yep.
Matt can do it.
My vote was yes.
The vote is five to zero. Jim Detzal will be the vice president for the year 2020.
I would like to nominate Joe Yoshimura for Vice President.
I would like to nominate Jim Detzal for Vice President.
How do we want to do this? Do we need a second on the motion?
So, Matt dominates Joe, who wants a second, will have to be voted.
I can't second myself. Can I?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second.
We'll do it five, the way with nominations, so the first vote will be for Joe. And if you get the majority, then we will move along to the oath. If not the majority, we can second vote for Jim. And if that's the majority, then we will move on to the oath. And if that's not the majority, then we'll keep going. All right, can you move then?
Go to four point six.
No, point five.
I'm on point five.
Okay, I'm not, so just sync it.
Not why, I don't know. Go ahead and move to the next one.
Four point six.
No, four point five.
I'm on four point five.
Now, this time, you should see that it is you're voting for Joe as Vice President at this time.
I don't have an option yet.
You guys hit this thing?
I'm showing how to discuss.
Okay, so this is for Joe?
Yeah.
Matt's showing at the bottom again. You don't have to verbally say what it is.
My vote was yes.
So the vote ended three votes no, two votes yes.
So we can move on, because he got the majority.
So I have now updated, since that was not the majority, I've now updated as Jim, so you should be able to refresh. And do you move to the next item?
Good.
And so now, we should move on to Joe.
Let's see.
It takes a minute.
Come on.
Matt can do it.
My vote was yes.
The vote is five to zero. Jim Detzal will be the Vice President for the year 2020. Okay, the next item on the agenda is establishing a time and place for board meetings, and... Just pause. Ask for a motion? For the approval. I don't know if you were imposing or not. Is there a motion to approve the provided board meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
You guys are gonna kill me.
My vote is yes.
My, I accidentally... Mine just too, but... Chris, did you get my vote? Because the thing went away before I could click it. It was yes, it was.
Oh, okay, sorry. The vote is five to zero, yes. So we'll adopt these board meeting times.
Oh, see, my vote, oh, here. I'm in there now.
So it's on four point nine, correct. So another position that we appoint in our organizational meeting is a Student Achievement Liaison. Are there any nominations for Student Achievement Liaison?
I nominate Matt for this position.
I nominate Pam Detzal.
Second.
Is there a second? Second on Joe's nomination.
I'll second Joe's nomination.
You're okay, I'll just do a roll call. So the first, and again, it's who gets the majority. So if the first one gets the majority, we stop, if not, we leave the second one. And if not, we continue the nomination. So the first one is for Joe, nominating Matt, so for Matt to be Student Achievement Liaison. So, Joe? Yes or no?
Yes.
So, Matt?
Uh, yes.
Pam?
No.
Mark?
No.
Jim?
No.
And then the second is for Pam to be Student Achievement Liaison. Joe?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jim? She's entering it, so we can do that.
So if you can refresh again, now it should be Pam Detzal that you will be... Are you guys seeing the voting?
No.
No.
I'm showing a Pam Detzal yes at the bottom.
Same here.
But that's all.
Yeah, Pam Detzal is who you're voting.
At the bottom, that results.
I just hit sync, but nothing.
Scroll up, see if whatever comes up.
Yes.
At the top there.
Yeah, but I can't call again. If you want to hit, can you hit back and allow me to?
Sure.
Redo it?
So I'm on four point eight now.
You guys still aren't seeing anything?
No.
We'll let you go to four eleven? Or four ten?
Uh, it just popped up.
There it goes.
Nope.
Oh, when I was working for...
We went backwards.
Now, so you can go to four nine.
It shows that was voted, but it shows...
Yeah, I'm on four point nine, and I have a...
Okay, so let me try one more time. Are you guys seeing anything?
Oh, exactly.
We'll take a verbal and then just move forward to the next one.
Voting on Pam to be Student Achievement Liaison. Joe?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
The vote was five to zero. Pam will be appointed the Student Achievement Liaison. The next appointment is for Legislative Liaison. Are there any nominations for Legislative Liaison?
Does anybody want to do it?
You want to do it?
No, I was gonna decline anyway.
I nominate Matt.
Second.
Sorry, I have added Matt T-Sort in there.
Oh, hit sync.
So if you can rethink, got everybody else in?
We need to go verbal again. Hopefully not. Well, just as long as they haven't recorded, I don't know.
Right.
Did you guys see anything?
Yes.
See Matt?
God, we all jumped on...
We still don't have Matt out there.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. Matt T-Sort will be the Legislative Liaison for 2020. The next is an appointment to the member of the Butler County and Career Development School Board. Are there any nominations for this appointment?
I nominate Jim Detzal.
I nominate Matt.
A second, hands.
Is there a second for Matt?
A second, Matt.
So we'll just do the rolls, so we can figure out who we're gonna vote on. First one to get the majority can stop. So first is Jim. Joe?
For whom now?
Jim.
No.
Matt?
No.
Pam?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
So since that's the majority, she's gonna enter in for Jim for the actual vote.
And it's there, you should be able to refresh now and see Jim's name. That's where you should see it now.
See it.
The vote passes four to one. Jim Detzal will be the appointed member to the Butler Technology and Career Development School Board. The next item on the agenda is to vote for recognition of our attorneys for the school district. The Board recognizes the following board attorneys: Dentmore for workers' compensation, financing and construction; Finney Law for the Board of revisions and expulsions; Ennis and Britton for general expulsions and construction. Is there a motion to accept?
Summum.
Second.
Vote passes five to zero. Those will be our chosen attorneys.
Didn't Matt get the vote? Oh, Matt.
My vote was yes.
Sorry. Sorry, Matt. The next item is OSBA membership dues for 2020 to the amount of $7,584. Are there, is there a motion to accept the payment for the OSBA membership dues?
Summum.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. We will forward the OSBA membership dues. The next is the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund membership. It says, whereas the Northwest Local Board of Education wishes to support the efforts of other boards of education to obtain favorable judicial decisions, and whereas the Ohio Board of Association Legal Assistance Fund has been established for this purpose, therefore, the Board hereby resolves to participate in the OSBA LAF for calendar year 2020 and authorizes the Treasurer to pay the LAF $250. Is there a nomination?
Summum.
Thank you.
Second.
My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next item is establish the Board Service Fund for 2020. In accordance to the ORC, the Board of Education may, by resolution, set aside each year from the general fund a sum not to exceed $2 for each child enrolled in the district, or $20,000, whichever is greater. Is there a motion to approve this?
Summum.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. The next one is for, another organizational item, for authorization of official signatures. The Board of Education authorizes the President and the Treasurer to be the official signers of payment of funds for the Board of Education, and further authorize that one of the three signed checks on all Board of Education accounts, and that the President's signature and the Treasurer's signature may be a facsimile.
Summum.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. The next one is organizational item, authorization for the Treasurer to pay bills. The Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to pay bills as they are presented within availability of funds, report all bills paid monthly to the Board of Education, and to include bills not paid due to unavailability of any funds. Is there a motion to approve it?
Summum.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. The next item is investment of inactive and interim funds and commercial paper. The Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to invest inactive and interim funds at the most productive interest rate according to Board policy whenever inactive and interim funds are available. The Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to invest up to a maximum of 40% of the district's interim funds in either of the following: commercial paper notes issued by a for-profit corporation, business trust or association, real estate investment trust, common law trust, unincorporated business, or general or limited partnership which has assets exceeding $500 million.
Summum.
Second.
My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next item is designee for public records training. Per the ORC, a member of the Board of Education or designee must receive three hours of public records training for each term of office. The Board of Education designates Chris Langford for training on behalf of the Northwest Local School Board of Education for the current term of office.
Summum.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. Congratulations, Chris.
And thank you.
The next item is Hamilton County Tax and Incentive Review Council Designee. Per the Ohio Vice Code, the Board of Education must designate a representative to serve on the Hamilton County Tax and Incentive Review Council. The Board of Education designates Amy Wells and/or Chris Langford.
Summum.
Second.
My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. The next organizational item is employment of temporary personnel. The Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to employ such temporary personnel as needed. Such employments are to be presented in approval by the Board of Education at the next regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve this?
Summum.
Second.
My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next is acceptance of employment resignation. The Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to accept the resignation of personnel as needed. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to accept the resignation of personnel as needed. Such resignations are to be presented for approval by the Board of Education at the next regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero. The next item is approved student activity accounts. The Board of Education authorizes the student activity accounts to be active for fiscal years 2020 and 2021. The board... The president recommends that the Board of Education approve the student activity accounts as listed.
So moved.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero. The next is to appoint a fiscal officer for student activity accounts. The Board of Education appoints the superintendent to be the sign-off officer of all student activity programs and shall present these programs to the Board of Education once each year. He will also have the authority to approve and/or modify the student activity budgets throughout the year. President recommends that the Board of Education appoint the superintendent as the fiscal officer for student activity accounts as listed.
So moved.
Second.
My vote is yes.
Vote passes five to zero. The next is organizational item to approve board member benefits. Pursuant the House Bill in October 17, 1985, Resolution 40 through 85, the current board members may exercise their own option to participate in the district's employee benefits plan at the board member's expense. The president recommends the Board of Education approve the board member benefits as listed.
So moved.
Second?
Second. My vote is yes.
The vote passes five to zero. The next item is records retention. Attached are records to... Are being presented for recognition and will be submitted for approval to destroy through the historical society. President recommends the Board of Education recognize the following records as listed.
So moved.
Second. My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero.
Next is a resolution for blanket certificates. This is to ask the board to approve blanket purchase orders up to $25,000. So, recommend that the Board of Education approve a resolution setting the blanket purchase order limit at $25,000.
So moved.
Second?
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero.
Next, we have our annual fund-to-fund transfer. This is to transfer the $60,000 from the general fund to the athletic funds to help offset the cost of transportation. So, I'm recommending that the Board of Education approve this annual fund-to-fund transfer as listed.
So moved.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero.
Finally, we participate in purchasing agreements so that we can get rebates back to pay our bills with a credit card so that we can get percentage back to help offset the cost of the district. So, for fiscal year 18, which we received in 19, was $29,000 rebate. And then we also are part of the progress reward program so that when they have to go throughout the district's purchase items for the building and they use the district's progress rewards card, we get discounts. But we do not use the rewards offered on like for gas or anything. We just get the discount. So, with that, I'd like to ask the board to accept the rebates and rewards as listed.
So moved.
Second. My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero. Yes. Next is an appointment of a purchasing agent. The Board of Education authorizes the director of business services as the superintendent's designate to serve as the purchasing agent for the school district. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of the purchasing agent as listed.
So moved. Second.
My vote is yes.
The next item is the recognition of booster support organizations. The board recognizes the following booster support organizations as attached. Attached to the board agenda is a list of our two booster organizations, Corrine High School, Northwest High School, and all the PTAs for our high schools, middle schools and elementary, and Houston Early Learning Center, if they have one from year to year. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of the pers... Excuse me, of the purchase... I went backwards for some reason. Did you guys also?
Yeah, but now we're cool.
All right. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education recognize the booster support organizations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero, and the one previous passed five to zero as well. So, what, president calls for an adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
We're ready for roll call.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Detschel?
Here.
Mr. Yoshimura?
Here.
Mr. T. Sort?
Here.
Mr. Detschel's still here.
Okay, I'm logged in, but I'm not getting the top part here. I gotta log out again?
The next item is presentation of the tax budget.
So, the Ohio Vice Code requires every taxing district to adopt a tax budget annually. And because we're on a fiscal year and not on a calendar year, we're kind of different than everybody else in the county. And so, everybody's sending the county their tax budgets right now. The county... The law did change and allow a modified tax budget to happen, which Hamilton County has adopted, which is what we file. So, majority of that is our five-year forecast. So, we have to file... For a modified, you only have to file your general fund and any other fund that collects taxes. A regular tax budget, you submit every fund you have. So, in our tax budget, you will see we have our five-year forecast, which is the general fund to give the county to know and the county budget commission know what our five-year plan is, five-year forecast, which is our budget. And then, the other two funds that collect... That we collect taxes for are our debt service fund and our permanent improvement fund. The debt service fund, the county has to look and see what our principal and interest payments that are due in the next year. What fund balance do we have in order to know what militaries they need to set annually to collect the amount of money needed to make those principal and interest payments. And then, the permanent improvement fund, we moved two inside mills from the general fund to permanent improvement fund previously. And so, those two mills collect about $3 million annually. And what the district spends it on is we have a bus replacement schedule, which we spend $500,000 on. We have a technology replacement schedule, which we spend $700,000 on. We have maintenance. District-wide, our budget is only $800,000. And then, the other million dollars is on... Is on the debt from the House Bill 264 project and the two high schools blended learning labs that were renovated. So, that's the $3 million that we spend annually in the permanent improvement fund. Why this is also important is because if the district were to ever want to move more inside millage to a permanent improvement fund, maybe to help with such things as maintenance, because $800,000, and the district is large and our square footage and our facility needs is very small. So, in order to be able to move inside millage, you have to have a hearing, and it has to be tonight. So, at your budget hearing. So, it's once a year you have that opportunity, and you have to show the need in your budget. So, for future thinking and possibilities, if that was ever... The board would ever want to think about that is we have to show the need in the budget, and we have to have a hearing tonight in order to be able to move this millage. So, is there any questions as far as the tax budgets?
I guess the liability of the maintenance only being $800,000, that's really low. So, I see that as a potential vulnerability for us. One large item at $800,000 would get eaten up pretty quick, I would imagine.
And it does. So, just like the controls at Monfort Heights or the ball field at Corrine High School?
The roof.
Well, the roof.
Yeah, and Matt, just so you're aware, we had to do a resolution for needs last time because of controls at Monfort Heights Elementary, and it was beyond the budget that we had established. So, that's the type of things they're talking about if we don't set it at the forefront.
So, if there's no other questions, I'm ready to move on to recommending.
Is there...
So, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the proposed fiscal year '21 tax budget, which has $100 million expenses in the general fund, which agrees to our five-year forecast. Has $5 million in the bond service fund or debt retirement for our Monfort Heights bonds and our master facilities funds, and permanent improvements of $3 million as I presented as far as what our bus replacement, technology replacement, maintenance and the annual debt. With that, I recommend the Board of Education approve that, the tax budget.
So moved.
Second.
My vote is yes.
That vote passes five to zero. And that concludes our budget meeting. The board... The president calls for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. My vote is yes.
And that vote passes five to zero.
Thank you.